On purpose.
On purpose.
Not only that, how do you can?
We're seeing uh me too in the spirit.
Oh.
No, that'll be fun.
Okay.
This is the last weekend, right?
They're they're banned, are they banned?
Where?
What time do they start?
Okay, welcome to our work meeting for Wednesday, February twenty eighth.
It's just been so long.
Uh Wendy is going on vacation tomorrow, so we have to hurry.
Great Friday. I'm sure she's glad to know.
I said Wendy's on vacation, so not till Friday.
I leave.
I leave, sorry. So not too much sauntering tonight, okay?
No sauntering. I was waiting for the first one.
Keep the sauntering.
Sauntering or songering?
Sauntering. That's what the legislature does when they want to break and they call it a song. Yes.
Have you heard of a Kirkle Dirkling?
No.
Okay, we're meeting.
They're already gone, wow, we're two minutes in and we're already gone.
It's a musical left turn all over.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
On one point one, review of this evening's agenda. Any comments, changes? Okay, one point two, future agenda items.
And just, it's just a matter of note, just to to you, um. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I went to the county council meeting just about some issues that they were having with some water coming out of Midas Creek and. Um, but the canyon that that this area left there was a whole lot of issues, anyway. Um, they asked, because they referenced our animal ordinance a couple of times, they they decided to table what they were doing and. Form a committee to kind of analyze it a little bit more and show um Councilwoman Stewart said that since Harriman had been referenced so many times, um. Perhaps somebody from Harriman should should be present in those meetings. And they asked if I'd be willing to do that because I was there and involved in that, and I just wanted to make sure you guys are okay with if we be. Present in those meetings, I don't know that there'll be a lot of feedback, it's just when they have questions about what our current ordinance is and who the person that will chair it is. You, I just wanted to make sure you guys are aware of that.
I just read Jared's mind and I agree, but better you than me.
Any representation we have.
That's actually pretty close.
Okay, cool, I just wanted it just a note, it's just to make sure everyone understands.
Yeah, I think you can agree there.
Yep.
Awesome.
Okay.
You have a conclusion in that?
Um, I don't think so, do we need anything on the school stuff for anything we're doing from what got announced last night?
Then I'll be coming to the next council meeting.
Okay, awesome, okay.
Basketball's coming up, finals are this weekend, so.
Works madness.
I mean, high school.
Oh, okay.
So we might have more recognition soon.
Awesome, state deck competitions came out last week, we had some first placeers out of Harriman and stuff, so.
Did Harriman win their semifinal, I thought they did.
Their basketball, tonight.
Tonight.
They got Lehigh tonight at seven.
We're gonna postpone meeting for that?
Stream it during council meeting at seven. Okay. Uh, tonight we are recognizing those gentles gentlemen that helped push the cars up Roadcrest.
Oh nice.
Cool. So they're all coming, and then we do have, her name is John Titus, he's a Harriman resident that spends. Like almost full time in at Fort Harriman with Kimberly Minn and all, and their like programming, coding class and programming, a lot like electronic, like he's a retired, so. Kimberly asked if we recognized him because he's just a volunteer that spends almost every day in there, so they recognize him with that, that. Edu- Jordan Education Foundation luncheon a while back, so. Finally tech, chat, tracking, so he'll be there tonight too.
Hmm.
Good dude.
As as another second, I thought it was pretty impressive that we all participated in that, we the people, it was pretty impressive to see us all there at the local middle school, so.
It's a cool competition, I'm glad they do that, it's so important.
I was more educated when I left.
Me too. Okay. Then we'll jump to item two then, administrative reports, discussion regarding your request that the city provide incentives to Slackwater Pizza, uh Blake.
Okay, so before we start, we have Justin and Blake here from Slackwater sitting behind me, so if there's any questions, uh. We can counsel for them.
We have Justin and Blake sitting here.
Great names, great names all around. Um, so before we start, I just kind of want to give a little background on the Anthem Center and kind of go into some information that was. A little bit more in depth than what was provided on the staff report, so the Anthem Center, Commercial Center was was created prior to Slackwater, obviously. And with the creation of that center, the council entered into agreements to provide incentives to the developer, which was Arbor Development. And uh for the project, and those those uh incentives were. Given to them to help them with infrastructure costs that they incurred for the commercial center construction and hopefully to provide incentives to end users. Or to attract users that we that we want, like Slackwater, so. Um Slackwater requested incentives from the city in November of twenty twenty two, this was when they first closed on the land, they were getting cost back on that earthwork and it was. It was a little bit higher than that anticipated, so um I sat in on a meeting back then and uh that was what was helping to offset the cost. And so we reached out to Arbor and asked them, like, is there anything you can do? They committed to helping them find a contract that they could provide work at lower cost, we never followed up with that, if that happened or not, I. I assumed it did, but I don't know if the costs were actually saving, well, it was about the same amount of cost, it was not a bit more, but um so there was nothing really done then. And then in April of twenty twenty three, early April, we received a second request because they'd reserved, received their building permit fees, um because they were getting ready to pull the building. Fees were estimated for around a hundred thousand dollars, the breakdown is in the the packet in your staff report. And this includes impact fees, building review fees, all the all the fees that go along with the pulling building permit. So they requested the, some type of incentive, reduction or total waive of the fees. And uh their justification for that um incentive to be provided was that they're gonna bring sales tax revenue to the city, create jobs and. And fulfill a need for sit down restaurant that we've been kind of talking about for years, so they they checked the boxes for that. Um, the building permit was then issued April fourteenth, about nine days after that request, and at that time, we were still in discussions about if the incentive would be provided or not. So the city elected to defer collection of the building permit fee and let them unfold the construction. Um, we we then reached out to the land developer because we knew we had that incentive to them and said. Is there anything, can we, can you waive your right to the incentives that we've given you so that we can use them to give them to the developer? They said, no, we'll just work with them, don't worry about it, so we we then were told that they entered into an agreement with Slackwater for an incentive. Um, and we assumed we were done, we weren't fully clear and aware that Slackwater was still looking for additional incentive on top of that, so it went quiet for quite a while. And then we were reviewing uh projects that were nearing minor construction, getting close to final inspection to get open, and we saw Slackwater was nearing that, so February ninth. We sent a letter requesting full payment of fees to Slackwater, they once again um came in and met with us and said, we we still want this incentive, is there anything you can do? So we came to the last council meeting, um while we brought it up in future agenda items and said that the council would be willing to discuss it, and so here we are discussing it tonight. And so the options, the alternatives that were provided in the staff report, I provided three, there's there's many more inside of these three, but. One would be to not offer an incentive, we we haven't offered incentives to restaurants before, but um. That doesn't preclude us from doing it, um, the second one would be to do a partial reduction of the fees, so you could maybe pick some fees as as we look through it, the impact fees. Are committed through the incentive package to um the gusts or harbor development, so the impact, the transportation and water impact fee are ones that we would not recommend if you were to choose that option. To reduce just because we, that would need to come out of some other fund um to make that whole, to pay the gust back for their obligation. And then the last one would be to um eliminate the entire building permit fee as an incentive, so. Somewhere in between there or on one end or the other is what we're looking at, we're just looking for direction on what the council would like to do and and potentially after this, uh. Maybe some bullet points for uh policy on how to move forward with incentives for businesses that come to town and some criteria like if you generate X amount of. Gross sales or X amount of sales tax per year, or X amount of visits per year, or something that's a value for job creation, something like that, um. So that would be a separate discussion, but maybe a policy that should be created to help economic development know when we should have these discussions or when we shouldn't have these discussions and say no, so.
And I would add one thing to that is it's difficult, once traditionally, we as Harriman have offered incentives to the developer. And not to the individual businesses, so we just need to recognize if we've already done that, we may have given up. All all our incentives to some other entity already who's supposed to be cutting those deals, signing those.
For this anthem side, we've given up um most of our share of the sales tax and the water and transportation impact fees. And uh and then there's some CDA funds that have been given up too, so so that that's the incentive package to the developer, so we don't really have any. Financial source to pull any more or funds from, other than these unrealized building permit fees at this point.
This one single project is kind of in a vacuum at that point, um not knowing, do we know what has already been received from Arbor from to the.
Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, a certain dollar amount or percentage or what that looks like, that'd be some information that I would need. Um, or even not just to this specific uh entity, but also to what we've already given up, what the percentage of the seed are in the water impact fees and what. What are the fees that we've already given them incentives for the total project, although there's multiple entities in there, um it's definitely a benefit to the city. But I think if you just look at this one specifically. I mean, do we need this? Yes, is it creating jobs? Yes, is it easy to say, okay, oh, I can see where we can waive some of these fees? And then we look at the totality of where we waived fees in the past and how much from our discussion last week even of what we waived and where we're at in deficits. It's it's a little more of a daunting aspect when you start looking at individual properties.
So for some reason, I was thinking that Winco gets credit, they don't, we don't get all their sales tax credit, and so is that through Arbor also?
So that was in a uh an agreement with Arbor, they brought, and so we amended. This was in nineteen seventeen or something like that, they're supposed to be Walmart.
Right.
An agreement was written with Arbor, it put that in line, but it was not, then they came back and. I'm looking to Kyle for the numbers, but it was like half a million.
Five hundred thousand, and then once that one is done, Arbor is going to collect another four hundred thousand.
So we're for the sales tax, so then there was an agreement, but Arbor was part of that agreement, they they agreed to give that up and change those agreements.
Right, and so I I just wanted to clarify that because it seemed like they were giving, it was all part of exactly what we were seeking for, it was the developers giving us the incentive. And to and that is a tool in their bag.
To recruit.
To recruit or bring people in, and so are are so they're not doing, they're not sharing any of that incentive?
They do have an agreement with Arbor.
My understanding is they've given them a grace.
And they may be close to maxing out because it's closer to the end of the build though too, so they're, they might have preloaded those incentives for the Winco and the other properties in there.
I'm not privy to.
We're not, we're not privy to their, again, those are.
Their agreements, yeah.
Our agreement is with the with Arbor.
Yeah.
And then how they're spreading that and uh the the agreements for something worth of eleven million total, the city is providing.
Uh, correct, so, well, there's the the CDA contribution and that's based off of their infrastructure improvement costs, so they submit those to us as they go, so that. Right now is around eleven point three million, we've sent them one point six million.
I guess, I guess if you look at our staff report, that there you ask, um next to last sentence in this says, if any fees are not charged, the city would need to use general fund to cover the costs. What general funds?
But what's our, what's our actual cost though of these fees, right, are these costs correlate to exact?
I think, I think.
Infrastructure costs?
These funds come out of general, like these go into the general funds, most of them, the ones that are review fees, not the impairments.
The impact fees we owe uh Arbor.
But I think that part of our fiduciary responsibility when we assess fees is to make sure that we aren't gouging, I could, I could be wrong, but it's.
I don't, we're allowed to, yeah.
That that we don't, right, and so these fees are set because there's a cost to doing business for us to do business with with anybody who develops and. And you might look at this and gather, there's no way it it costs that, but then there's analysis that goes behind all the fees that are set and assessed, so it's like. Well, there is a true cost, and and when we're talking about bringing it out of general fund, we definitely had a budget meeting last week that looked pretty scary as far as. Not scary, but. But um.
No, that's about right.
Challenging.
Depressing, depressing, we're very behind.
I like the challenging.
We're very behind on those kinds of things, and part of it is because we've been trying to say, okay, no, yeah, we'll waive that for you, you know, okay, well, we'll waive that for you. And at some point, we waive away our ability to maintain a road because we waved away. Or or keep good staff because we can't afford to pay them anymore because we keep waiving away the fees that that there's a lot of um. Study that goes into making sure that the fees aren't set extraordinarily high or too low, you know, to try and keep fees.
And I think if you look at this like per project, it makes sense, right, oh, what they're offering, what we're getting as incentive, makes sense to waive a fee or push it down or. Or get it at a different impact, or get it from sales tax or revenue further down, but when you look at twenty years of of this, one offs, it becomes a bigger issue.
Well, and let me explain, I think, why, because they called me into the meeting too, and so explain what they're, you know, the reason they came to us is they're, they had an understanding that. Arbor was gonna do there and we were in New York, so there was just, there's a misunderstanding in there somehow, so I don't think they're necessarily, they're not coming out of nowhere saying, we're not willing, you know. There was just, there was a misunderstanding that we don't, I don't, you know, we try not to get into playing game.
Well, sometimes the conversations aren't congruent enough or quick enough or fast enough.
So the November twenty two meeting, they kind of felt like when we were like.
That we were possibly gonna do it too, it's, you know, and I don't know.
Well, the door's never, the door's open, but it was never closed or never communicated, so.
If I, enough I step in their shoes and somebody's like, no, just get going on it, we'll figure out later, and then you're kind of trapped trapped in it, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, and that was one of the questions I had.
And I don't know if I would have went forward.
Postponing or not collecting the fees at time of service, is that an administrative role, is it what we've policy, previous policy, we've given that latitude? To say, go ahead and move forward, or is that something where we haven't set in stone on policy yet?
That's why that's the need for policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, true, yeah.
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 Yeah, I I think it's unspoken right now, so it's it's not something that has never been done, but it's rare that.
Steve's also collecting. Okay.
I I did reach out halfway through that too, because we did get a bill halfway through, so there was another communication in between those two dates. And we had, there was a third, probably a middle conversation, we're like, hey, I thought this, and then uh uh Blake kind of said that he was gonna go back and ask again. And that was like a year ago, probably, since then, we didn't, again, we didn't, then they took that um that bill away again, and then we didn't get it again, so it, we we, they tried to charge us.
Are we charging interest?
Free, yeah. They did, just to clarify, they they tried to charge us three times, and two times they said, we'll we'll work on it.
We're still working on it, yeah.
So that that's kind of where, yeah, I don't, I don't mean either of us, that's just.
No, you're.
Yeah.
That's where our policy is.
So that's where this is coming in, this isn't just a normal, somebody's requesting a wait, you know, this, there's a kind of an understanding, so that's why I agreed to even bring it last week to the.
No, it makes sense.
No, I think, I think it needs to be brought up, and not, not just for this one project, but ongoing if.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the hard part is. I'm not aware that we have any formal policy regarding incentives, how we give them, when we give them, under what circumstances, that kind of thing, it's very.
But all of those decisions do rest here with nowhere else in the process.
Here.
Should, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know that we've established any policies nor.
Even if the council.
Had any opportunity to approve necessarily um any specific instances like that, uh that weren't developer related, so. Uh, I have a question, instead of perhaps waiving, is there a an ability to delay collection of these fees until, you know, after they're up and operating?
So.
We have no doubt, whatever your pro forma is for this, you're going to exceed it extraordinarily.
We are worried, right, we're worried. We know we're, we're.
Yeah, you guys, good luck.
Like we were saying, we literally got eight, eight hundred, eight hundred applications.
Oh my gosh, you're kidding, that's awesome.
So it it's been, it's it's been good and.
Three of them are city councilmen.
But to, when we first started, just one thing too, is like, we almost backed out and we needed like two hundred fifty grand. So that's why, that's like in the beginning, because that was right when the interest rates skyrocketing.
Remember.
Then we had the, had a really weird bid back from land and he's like, oh, I can do, you know, I can figure this out, I can, I have my own land guy, blah blah blah. That turned out to be way higher than what we already had, so that's why we kind of approached both of you guys, where it's like, hey, if you can give us a hundred, you can give us a hundred, I'll throw another hundred, I'll throw another fifty in. And then we'll make it work, and that's kind of where I was on the blueprint of what was going on, and then then like, what, a month ago or whatever, we got that other bill and it's like, we're like three months behind.
So this is holding CEO of, sure. What?
Can't hold up CEO.
Yeah, legally, but.
So we're like a.
I I'm wondering, like we see, Steve, I I don't mind looking at maybe a possible reduction, but in in or even just postponing collection of. Due for sales tax or for revenue or for what, how are we structured that, I don't know what we have legally can do or what, but. I mean, anytime we talk about waiving fees, that's that's a.
I just don't want to put them further behind until they've had a chance to at least get going and make some, make some cashing up, right?
And again, I'm not saying that, I'm just, we, and we brought this up, so there's a lot of things I'm saying that they have, you know, that we didn't say that they have, but. We have, we are worried about precedent, you know, that if, you know, you've got somebody like, you know, Toshkano, like, yeah, I could say.
Future, yeah.
That they talked about, are they watching a meeting and wanting an incentive too, I mean, that's, again.
Sure, I'm sure they all, everybody would like, yeah.
I'm just saying, again, I'm not saying I don't agree with.
Yeah.
Any problem, just saying that's one thing that we did bring up is, I think, why we worry about creating precedent.
But you, so you, you, talk, correct, if we, if we create or we do a special. Deal, we're programmed with this company corporation and then set new policy, and we follow the policy from here on out, would that set a precedent of special deal or special arrangement?
Well, there's precedent in the eye of the beholder, uh, so whether or not there's a policy passed, um, I think the council always has discretion on whether or not to. To deviate from the policy, um, or just, you know, hold true to the policy, um, so I don't think there would be anything legally requiring us to. To do something like this in the future for anyone else.
Yeah, because I don't think that you'll, you'll get the same circumstances.
Yeah, and and I I agree with that a lot, I think we get. Scared of of doing some kind of a deal and then afraid that somebody else is gonna beat us up because we don't do the same deal.
But there is an element of fairness.
Sure, the the fairness is the thing that I'm concerned about, not necessarily um what's going on, but the reality is if if somebody's coming into our community and creating a hundred jobs, it's very valuable, right? Because it's not only the business paying taxes, but it's all, may have potentially a hundred taxpayers paying taxes as well, right? Um, all of that is, helps generate revenue, so. Um, the. I I'm still inclined, based on just the fact that there's the, so much is incentivized to the developer of this area, so much money, so much money. Um, it, but it's, I mean, it's a, we can argue if that's the right decision or not, but. Look at the, look at the development we're getting, right, look at the the people that are coming in, the kind of businesses are opening, these are great amenities and and features for our community, so. Life full of little trade offs, as my mom used to say, um, but in this case, I'd be much more inclined to say, let's. Let's delay collection of these, you know, for twelve months or something like that, let them get out of their, you know, get out of their way a little bit, let them get opened. Get rolling, find out how successful and what the demand in Harriman is, which I think is gonna blow their doors off, um, and then then have a chance to address this and maybe a little later down the road. That, that's kind of where my thoughts are, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to wait.
Wait, don't wait anymore.
So yeah, there's two questions at hand, right, one is this ask and then pause. And they, of course, dovetail, but this ask, I think the overarching thing is we have an agreement in place where we have already committed these funds, we have. We can't do both.
The only one I think we could do is maybe the building permit fee.
So, so here's, here's the thing with, and this, and this straddles over into the policy question, and I meant, I mentioned this last meeting. Probably many, many others in the past, in my mind, the policy, in this case and others, should be that we don't waive any of those fees. Those fees are there because there's a cost, a direct cost right up front, that's why this fee is charged, and in every instance that staff has in eight years I've sat here. Has brought these to us, we are always behind in. In the amount that it should be, right, those costs continue to increase and we can't increase them fast enough to keep pace because of how the system works. So it's it's never enough to cover the cost, whether it's the permit fee, right, that there's all these people that work here that that's, they're spending time and if that's what that fee's for, is to pay that, there's, it's not extra, we're not making money. On those fees, so in my mind, from policy standpoint, we don't, we can't ever really waive any of those fees, we talk about impact fees especially, there's a cost to. The reason those impact fees are there, it's a direct impact to the infrastructure, right, whether it's a home or a business or whatever, they're paying their portion of the road, the sewer, the water, et cetera, to go in the ground, that's happening now. If if we don't collect that, then who pays for it, in this case, we've already agreed to put that money into the CDA for the developer to use for these incentives. If we, if we unilaterally make another um agreement outside of that to waive that fee, then we don't have that fee to pay them, to Nathan's point, we still have to pay them.
Right.
So if we do, if we change that fee at all, waive it, reduce it, whatever, we really have to make a contingent upon making an agreement with the developer that we don't pay that to them. Right? Like, there's, there's a couple of steps to the business side of that for this particular instance, so. I mean, when it comes to the fees that are being asked for, fee, I mean, fees are just the nature of the fees, the one, all the fees that we charge, they are the nature of, there's a direct cost to providing that service right now. For whatever it is, we already have, um, so for for this one, my answer would be, and for any others, we we can't, especially this one, we've already committed that money. If we were to do something, we'd have to get the developer on board to to do likewise, um, so I I think your solution, Steve, is perfect. Well, as as perfect as it can be, right, is, given the circumstances that Lauren brought to us and has been described. We, that that's the lever that we can pull is, well, let's work out a payment schedule, rather than saying you ought, you ought right now, when maybe you weren't expecting it. Part of that's misunderstanding is on us, then we can be lenient in how we collect it, but I don't see how we can waiver reduce without an agreement on the other side.
So if that's something, maybe I can then propose then, kind of what you're saying and what you're saying kind of merge, maybe at this point, say, let's defer for now, and then let's work with the developer. Try to come up with another outside agreement with him and them, if not, then we come back with a deferral.
With a payment fund.
So so even with the deferral, they they have been sending us the demand, so Arbor's been sending the demand, they they believe these should have been paid already in our.
They should have already been collecting these fees.
So they can start paying them.
Well, they they need those funds to make good on their other obligations or anything.
And reminder, that's just the transportation and water impact fee.
So water impact is.
And it's seven, they get their.
Seventy five percent.
They get how much?
Seventy five percent.
So I'm, I'm more than happy trying to facilitate that.
Talking about like.
And forty grand.
Thirty, forty grand out of this, yeah.
And they get seventy five percent of traffic? So twenty two thousand, so forty some thousand.
So if we defer this, we're, we're on the hook now, they're asking for it now.
Arbor's asking for forty some thousand.
Arbor's asking for their portion.
And then whatever incentive they've given Slackwater at this point or reduction.
It's ten thousand a year over ten years.
Yeah, I'm reading this, this agreement.
Oh, it's minimal, it's a hundred thousand.
It's that or five over twenty.
But you're gonna revenue, you're gonna generate more than this, so.
Talk about what it actually means versus what. I I think having that, if if that's council's, sitting down with the the gusts, Arbor, and having that conversation would be appropriate, um, that would give us a little time. appropriate, um, that would give us a little time. There are several versions of this agreement out here, I think I have the, the one from two thousand nineteen, which is the most recent participation.
The seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
Sales tax.
Well, the tough thing too, these fees, these fees are assessed when you pull permit in twenty-twenty or twenty-two, okay.
And that, that agreement's since expired for the seventy-five percent.
Other than they, they pulled their permit before, which is why they're not. So, um, I think, I'd, I'd be. There's something we can have a discussion in next two weeks and I don't think.
Yeah.
To talk about that, see what that means.
I think you rightly pointed out, we're constrained, right? And, and within those constraints, I think we should do what we can. Um, and, and hope for a positive outcome, but I think, to your point, we're gonna have to engage with Arbor Development, with the guests and and, and see if they're willing to accommodate some.
Well, if, if, if we're gonna give some flexibility to, hopefully they'll give us flexibility to pay them as we're collecting.
Right, yeah, 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 and, and then if, if we can work in accommodation there, I think, you know, we're happy to share that accommodation here and, and give these guys some relief of some kind, right? But I, I would, back of what you're saying, I don't think, I don't think a waiver of fees is feasible unless the guests are saying, oh, yeah, don't pay us.
What that, what that means is we don't, we don't have them. Right, like, we don't, we're giving that, we don't have that money to give.
Yeah, but if they're saying, hey, you don't need to pay us the, the forty grand you owe us, then there's no reason for us to collect it.
Exactly.
Right.
There might be another, something they.
Yeah, he's just gonna argue that he's giving us, I, I, it's, it's gonna be a circle.
Yeah.
But we, it, it's for us, I mean, like, obviously, we, we're, we're really happy to be here, so we can discuss this all we want, but we're, you, like, the city has been way more, um, good to us than he has been, so I don't pick a side, you guys win. So, you know, and, and I, and I get it, it's just hard because we were, we were, it's, it's hard.
Can we record that?
It's just hard, like, trying to sell ourselves at, at the, at the finish line, you know what I mean? Like, we already, like, did it. And we're like, and we're like, not high-fiving, but we're like, okay, we're gonna make this work, but now we don't really, we don't, we don't really have any leverage.
Right.
You know, it's kind of like, it's kind of. And, and I, and I understand what you guys decide, that's, that's, I mean, I get it.
That's kind of our problem is we don't.
No, no, I'm not gonna be.
We did that a while years ago and don't really have that.
Yeah, and I'm not gonna be upset with what happens, but it, it, the one thing that is just frustrating is because, because if, if we were about ready to back out right now, I think there'd be a whole different conversation, right? And that's the conversation we had two years ago. Because I'm like, interest rates were two and now they're eight all of a sudden, this is this, we're like, we're done, we're like, we told, um, him that we're like, we're out, it's like, we can't do this. Like, we extended the contract, I think, six times, trying to figure out different ways to do it. And really what made us do it was that last pitch from the city. So that, that's where I'm kind of, that's where, that's where it's a little bit frustrating, where, and, and again, it's miscommunication probably all around, like, and I understand, I'm not ever gonna hold it against it, but that's, that's just where, where, where we're at with that, where it's kind of like, wow. And then we, then we came, like, city came to us twice, we're like, hey, you gotta pay, oh, no, no, don't worry about it, we'll figure it out. And then again, in the middle of it, they're like, no, no, don't worry, we'll figure it out. Okay, well, it's not, that little bit was like, okay, well, we think they're gonna do it, and then like I said, we're three months behind and we're just shoveling money into it now.
Well, I think to Nathan's point, we need to maybe delve into this in a little language in that agreement. If we don't, if we don't collect it, are we allowed to? Saying a few things quietly.
We also might have a little more leverage than you do.
So, so I, I think what Stephen and I are saying is like, we want to do what we can to facilitate within our constraints, like, we, we, we don't have the money.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I, I, I get it, like, I, I'm not gonna just, like I told him, like, I'll, I'll pay him, I'm not gonna.
There's probably some maybe creative things we can help facilitate with the developer, their language.
Okay, well, I hope you guys are felt, we, we really do want to try to do what we.
Oh, I, yeah, I, I, we, we completely appreciate it.
We've got a good relationship with.
Yeah.
The guests, so.
I, I appreciate you guys bringing it up even, so, I mean, like, that, that long, it's, it's meant a lot to us, so.
And may, and maybe it should have came just a little bit sooner as well, down the road, but that's a policy thing that we can figure out.
Well, we're, we're glad you're here.
Yeah.
We need you here. We're gonna, you're gonna get a lot of support, we're gonna be really excited to help.
If you have that many applications to work, I think.
Ribbon cutting.
You're not gonna have very many open tables.
I'm not.
Opening on the eleventh, right? You said the eleventh?
Soft.
Uh, yeah, we kind of opened up a little quietly, so we'll just throw a couple banners out front and unlock the doors. Give our chance, our team a chance to kind of grow into the roles hopefully a little bit before they get blown off.
As soon as, as soon as they hit social media and somebody knows you guys are.
We're trying to keep it quiet.
And you, you own the sandy one as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, we were there a couple weeks ago, so.
We're gonna be busy, but, you know, nonetheless, everybody's still learning, you know, just because they've been through four days of training, doesn't mean they're gonna be.
They're experts. We got less than four days.
Maybe we got eight hours.
Okay, we'll look forward to having you in the community and thank you, so we'll make some big time.
Appreciate the conversation. Policy.
Thank you.
Um.
Thank you.
Is it on the agenda?
I think really, we probably owe you is to come back with something, but what I would look for is kind of a high level. One, are, do you want to be in the policy or in the incentive business? And if so, developer, most of our commercial property is already spoken for at the moment, so I, I don't know how timely, this would have been good about five, six years ago.
Fifteen, yeah, fifteen, but.
So one, if you're interested in it, then we probably should do a policy, we can look at what other communities are offering, because the incentives really are how you're trying to set yourself above somebody else.
Just to buy a business over your competing.
Correct, right? Because if, if the only reason they're coming is for the incentive, having done this, they'll stay until somebody else offers them a different incentive, right, and you bounce around.
But I think it might be a good thing to put in these MDAs for the commercial properties, right? I think that's where we're, we got two or three in front of us. That may be more official than anything.
Well, that's where they, that's where they are, that's where, that's where the incentive money is, but.
But see, in hindsight, tho- those agreements should have indicated that a certain percentage of those
Yeah.
things should have been used to attract or incentivize the businesses that are coming in, right? Because the way that it is, is if
We're just gonna give it to you.
The developer has the money and then they have all the discretion over it, they can just choose to pocket it and let the development, you know,
Do a bill or not.
Yeah, right.
We had this discussion even like on the auto, all that kind of stuff for the.
Absolutely.
No, we're not turning, we're, here's the amount, but we're not turning it all over community to spend, this is to incentivize.
Right, and it's an anchorment or whatever.
Which, which we, which we did.
Yeah.
And we're still, you know, we're still having a hard time.
Right, right, but this, but the problem was this, this agreement predated everyone here.
Right.
And that, those people weren't putting in there, but I agree a hundred percent, it's like, we gotta figure out, it'd be nice to delay them paying us, but do, we don't have the money to just say, yeah, we'll waive another fee.
Because we still pay the costs.
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, I don't know if you, I'm not, I'm not arguing about a policy, I think we've got to go back and put it in the DAs. Because I don't know, I want, I think we want these incentives to be the exception rather than the.
I've got a few bullet points, maybe for, if we're gonna talk about a policy, there's a few things I want to throw out there to consider, right? So one, do we want to be in the, do we want to be in the incentive business? Well, you have to, because everybody else does. Right? So what, what makes sense, we've learned some lessons, but as these seats change, those.
Is that council-driven or developer-driven though? How, is it incentives to developers or to the end user?
I have a question.
Hold on, so I think, I think we need to, to be competitive, right? But to Nathan's point, if that's the only thing that brings someone here, I mean, there's, I can cite several, several of them right off the top of my head that we looked at with some of these things, that that's the case, once that incentive runs out, the time period or the dollar amount, then they're looking for the next one to bounce around because it's, they look at it as income to them. Right? And it's, it's just journey. Um, most of, most businesses, you would think, auto is definitely one of them, I think that's the biggest culprit with those. But, commercial, regular retail, commercial enterprises like this typically aren't gonna do that as much. They're pro-furnish, location-based, et cetera, and all those sorts of things. So it's, we need to, but what I want to talk about is, like, what are, what's kind of the framework that we should look at for a policy? So for me, for the reasons I stated, as far as waiving fees, it doesn't make sense to waive fees, we still have that cost that we're welcome. And that's a upfront cost to us, right? Where the incentives generally lie is in the sales tax generation, a percentage over a period of time, et cetera. And that's directly tied to what they bring in to the community, right? So it's mutually beneficial. But it's along the way, we're not taking all the risk upfront, right? We waived that fee, that particular business does, and I've sat here through many of these, oh, that we're gonna be so busy, it's gonna be this, it's gonna be that, and then some of them don't, they, we waived the fees, they didn't even get out of the ground.
Don't invoke permit.
Right? They, they got, they got their benefit and then we, and then we never saw it, or they're only there for a small amount of time and then it's, it's bacon. Well, we've incurred that cost upfront, you know, we just eat it. So it has to be, you know, performance-based incentives. Creating jobs and taxes, absolutely, but it's the performance in that, we can't pay that upfront, that would be my main point with these.
Yeah, I think, I think if you're giving a percentage of growth in revenues, that's where the tax, that's where the incentives should be based, right? If they prove out to be a profitable organization and we're gonna give them a percentage of that, um, sales tax revenue.
They get part of what they bring in.
Yeah, you, you get what you kill, right?
Yeah.
But in, for, for us to take the risk with taxpayer money, hoping that a business will be successful, I think is the wrong approach, yeah.
And then the, the other part, every business has come in and kind of given us the same, the same reasons. Yeah, this, business circumstances change and that's part of the risk of doing business and it's not the taxpayer's job to, to, to bail people out. I know that there's the misunderstanding, you know, you feel that, that's, I get all of that, but that I've done business for a long time, nobody's ever built, built me out, right? I have to make that decision on the risk. So at least that's what I think should guide it, is performance-based incentives, right? And then Sherry makes an excellent point, as part of our boilerplate agreements and, and Teddy mentioned, where these things need to live is in the development agreement, not hey, come in and make your pitch and back your once-off sort of. And going forward, less, I mean, lessons learned, like you said, this one was put in place so prior to my time, right? Prior to twenty sixteen is when this.
Anthem was brutal, yeah.
Yeah, when, when Anthem was done, so a long time ago and what, what do you do? We've learned that lesson, so we need to put it in a policy, so to live beyond this experience.
We know other agreements where we have promised to pay stuff whether we get collected or not.
Right.
So, I mean, at least, at least this one is, at least this one's, we, we pay what we're collecting and paying.
So part of it, the incentive base, I think part of our notes of a boilerplate agreement is that it just goes straight to the developer. We want to find a way to make sure at least a portion, certain amount of it goes to the end user, right?
And some of it should go to the developer, right? They're taking a risk, putting all that money in the ground, building roads, you know, moving stuff, getting it out of the ground and ready for people to move in, right? So they're, they're taking risk and there should be some compensation for them too. But again, it still should be tied to stuff coming out of the ground and, and producing revenue, yeah.
Now, wasn't there some legislation I thought?
That, I was gonna bring that up.
Yeah, I was like, there's legislation that's guiding this to you.
So, yep, two years ago, the legis, uh, the legislatures passed a bill that prohibits, um, sales tax to retail facilities unless they fall within one of the exceptions, the exceptions are fairly limited. If you're in a, um, a small county, then that's an exception. If it's under two thousand square feet and there's no two thousand, or, or twenty thousand square feet, there's no other twenty thousand square feet facility within the development. Um, and then there's the housing element, um, which is probably the one that we'll be using the most, which we're drafting an agreement right now that, yeah, that it's gonna be mixed-use and there's housing and there's gonna be some affordability aspect to it. So these are likely gonna be limited in the future because of this bill.
And, well, this bill was in place before they even approached.
But this is, this is, but that's referring to like a CDA and property tax money and stuff, or is that?
Retail facilities.
It doesn't cover the sales tax incentive.
No, it does, it's any, any, any tax incentive.
And other things that have been discussed are already in the framework of existing agreements, right?
Right.
So, um.
So I think that would guide a lot of that policy, right?
Yeah, it's, it ties our hand essentially.
Yeah, there's, there's not much.
Which is not a bad thing, if you think about it, I mean, I'm not suggesting that there's not risk, but there's a risk inherent in life. And so if you want to run a business, your job is to, to do the performance and understand the likelihood of it being successful, and then you roll the dice based on your best evidence, based on your best analysis, whether it's.
But the, the developers.
The only difference here is I think they did their analysis and said, we can't make it work. And somehow it was communicated to them, that there would be some, some help, and they counted on that to make it work.
Yeah, I remember asking about why, when are they coming well down, they don't know because now it might not pencil, I remember that there was a pickup along, along the way.
So two, two questions, that, the developer can offer incentives off of what, without this law, because they're not a retail facility, correct? So they have other incentives and programs outside of that?
Well, they, they are the public entities.
Okay, and then do we have any other current projects that fit in this where we're not collecting fees yet? At this magnitude, there may be some smaller ones, but.
I don't, I'm not working any things.
No, it's pretty rare.
Okay.
So for me, kind of two major points for policies, we don't, as a policy, we don't waive fees, like, I don't, I don't think we should give anyone the expectation that that's even possible.
That's what I think.
Those are real costs.
And I think we collect at time of service though as well.
And then any, any actual incentive is a separate agreement and performance.
Yes.
But is it a reimbursement at that point, or is it, because you're collecting, you should be collecting upfront, right? These should have been collected at time of service or permit issuers for fees.
But not for an incentive, an incentive would be based on, if we receive the sales taxes, we get paid that, that percentage of money.
There's a good distinction that Nathan and I were talking, if an incentive is given ever upfront, there should be an agreement that has clawback provision. That if they don't do that use for a certain time or don't generate performance, they have to pay back what they've been given.
Problem is when it's a, when it's a, when it's an entity that's has limited liability, they go bankrupt, you'll never get it back.
Okay.
But where that's possible, I'm totally agree.
I think you're gonna put it in there.
I think it's a good framework to have a discussion about that policy.
Yeah, well, for sure, yeah.
Okay, are you okay, Mike?
Yeah.
We're gonna meet in with Arbor.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the one challenge, remember when one fifty-one came out and they said you can do housing, is that they didn't give any credit to housing.
Already done.
Already done, yep.
So, the Anthem commercial was part of the Anthem development, which has a lot of this housing already.
Can they not use that as a?
We don't get to count any of that because it was already built.
Previous to legislation, right?
This was to make housing more affordable.
And I think that's happened in two years.
Yeah.
Well, it's gotten a little closer.
We did try to get credit for things we had done and they very specifically said no. They, they saw it.
In case you want to know, it's called meandering or.
That's when they take a break.
Laundering.
Between our meetings.
Drift, walkabout, drift.
Okay. I hate to say this, this is gonna be a big discussion. Mine, the two, if you want to move somewhere around, two point four should.
Are you here for, you're here for two point two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want to make you late, we might have to pause, we might have to pause.
No, they'll probably have to come back.
I don't think I'm going to these meetings.
I don't think we're getting through that.
He's a masochist, he loves it.
So then I'll run something by you, that you, I don't think we'll get done before seven anyway, so we'll probably have to come back after, our general meeting is gonna be fast. Are you okay if we try to knock us through these others first, et cetera?
At your service.
Where are you guys taking?
We're gonna have an hour of reservations.
No, we're not, it's gonna be.
We have to air here.
Who invited them? Is this the essay winners though, so that's not.
What should we do? I know this is thirty-seven.
It's your meeting, there.
You know what? He's here.
Let's go.
Let's go.
Two point two, discussion on cities, water, utility rates.
So I can see that, I believe that.
So, so if you recall, we brought this, it's been a while since we talked about it, but there's been local, uh, events that's happened since then. And so the last time we talked, I want to be more discussion on the capital projects, specifically secondary and what was included. And since that time, Olympia Hills, we decided to do way of secondary there, we started to move forward with the R study again, and then we changed to where there's no secondary throughout the new development, so we had to revamp the master plan again, redevelop.
So we had to revamp the master plan again, redevelop all the capital projects list. And so now we're bringing this back to you to have the discussion. So here it is, we have Keith Larson with Bone Collins, who you probably remember from previous. Um, here to kinda talk about, uh, what we have come up with now, so. Keith?
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna go quick.
He's taking your place tonight.
I think I remember everybody being here about eight months ago. And so, uh, I know your memory of previous rates is perfect, so we don't need to spend too much time on that. This is the outline, but I'm just gonna jump into it. Last time we spent quite a bit talking about, uh, rate structure changes, meaning how we collect the, the, the revenue. And we made a few changes that are summarized here. And basically they were all designed to align better, uh, with the actual cost of providing service, to simplify your rates and then also to more fairly allocate costs. So that's what we did eight months ago, okay? Um, then I was asked to look at some changes relative to our strategy for providing water service. So, uh, here's what happened, let's start over here on this side for just a second. What we did was we pulled out a number of the secondary improvements. By doing that, we had to increase a number of improvements on the, on the culinary side. But overall, if you look at build out, uh, the change is big drop in secondary, uh, somewhat offset by culinary, but we're saving about, uh, fifty million in water costs for building out the system. Okay, so let's, let's look more at the ten year window and say, okay, here's what we had in the previous ten year window. And we're actually saving more than that, we're saving about seventy million dollars by eliminating a bunch of secondary. We got some, uh, culinary. One interesting thing that happened with this though is that, uh, secondary, a lot of that was brand new construction that we could put up at least partially onto the developers and just pay the upsides. When we shifted over to the culinary, we were ending up having to upsize some existing facilities. Um, and basically the city has to front more of that cost. So we actually went up slightly in what the city's responsibility was from eighty nine million to ninety two. Not a lot of difference there, but we had hoped that that would come down a little bit, but that's what ended up happening. Um, I went really quick on that, any questions, comments?
This is infrastructure cost, not cost of actual water.
Correct, this is just infrastructure cost that we're talking about here.
But it's a five billion increase for a fifty million dollar D P S, you know?
Yeah.
Seems like a term for.
Yeah. And, uh, I will note that, uh, you'll actually get that money back, a lot of that through impact fees over time. It's just, uh, in that ten year window, we ended up having to front just a little bit more. Okay, so to your question, the other thing that I've been asked to look at was, uh, we made a shift and purchased, changed the policy to purchase more Jordan Valley water, uh, in the winter, uh, to help with some water quality, uh, issues. And so, uh, in the end, that only increased those costs by about ten percent. But Jordan Valley is a big chunk of your water budget. So it's a five hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, increase, five million over ten years. What that does is it affects your rates by about four point three percent. So adding that additional Jordan Valley water in the winter bumps that up just a little over four percent.
Just so we're clear, that's five million dollars for safe water versus safe water, but this one looks a little better.
Little T, less TDS?
Less TDS, but it's not anything to do with water quality, it's just simply to satisfy people's concern about.
Well, scientifically, water quality, but not public opinion of water quality.
So we're paying five million dollars over ten years for public opinion of water quality.
And this is just based on our.
That's the public opinion.
Guidance a couple, a few months ago. Yes, when you said if we could shift more, now, one thing we should keep in mind, just cause we ask Jordan Valley doesn't mean they will have water on two cell towers.
Don't mean they'll sell it to us.
So what if I, I don't wanna squirrel too much, but just to note on the cost of that. There, it's hard to quantify on the other side, right? So having lived here for fifteen years, we have replaced everything water related from water heaters, the actual water softener, to fixtures themselves, right? Every faucet, like everything like there's, so if we don't pay on, on the end user, like our next step personally is, or like a lot of people already have, I'm gonna go invest money into a whole house filtration system to save the wear and tear on all those things that pay thousands and thousands of dollars. So, so the users, like Steve just said, the users are gonna pay for one way or another.
Yeah, but it, they'll still be TDS a little higher even if they get it from Jordan Valley. But it doesn't take that away completely, is all I'm saying. It, it, it will seem a little bit better, but it doesn't mean you're gonna not.
No, it helps a bit, but.
Anyway, sorry, I digress.
No, that's, that's great. I, we wanted to answer that question for you, provide some information. There you go. Okay, so, uh, if you remember, this was the big chart, this was what we focused on last time. I'm gonna go real quick, uh, the bars are expenses, the lines are revenues. Uh, you've got O and M in blue, debt service in orange, and then capital in green with a couple little miscellaneous. You've got some grant funding and some bond funding on your capital.
Just, just to be clear.
Yeah.
I'm a little slow to pick up here. It looks like on that graph that every year from twenty twenty three going forward, the expenses would substantially exceed the revenues generated.
Uh, that is exactly right.
Okay, just, just making sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So your rate revenue is right here in the gray.
But that's current rate, not proposed?
It's current rate, current rate, no changes, current rate is in the gray. The, uh, black represents total revenue with impact fees. So those are taken into account. The green dash line up here represents, we take the value of your system, we divide it by the service life, and we figure out how much should you be putting into your system on average to sustainably fund your system? So if your system's worth a hundred million and it will last fifty years, we should be putting in about two million a year into the system over time. Otherwise our system's degrading over time and we're kinda, uh, setting ourselves up for a, a, a time bump. That's, that's what this dash green line is up here. Okay, then the last thing to mention here, these green, the, the, kind of the darker green are what we have identified as needing to be constructed in your master plan in order to support your current, uh, projected development plans. So if we wanna have infrastructure in place in time to support the projected development plans, this is the plan that needs to happen. Uh, you've got a lot of things going on, um, and so this is a little bit front loaded here. You'll notice out here, these are not specific, uh, projects out there. Those are, uh, revenue identified to, uh, maintain the system, which we're not gonna be doing much in these years because we're just focusing on getting that backbone out there. Okay, and to your point, we've got a problem. This is where we're at, this is where we need to be. I wanna point out fiscal year twenty twenty three, this, this has already happened. So this is pulling out of your revenues, uh, to, to make, to make that hole there. Uh, twenty twenty four, we've got lots planned, we do have a big bond that we've identified. And so that's funding a lot of that, but again, we're still pulling down our cash reserves there. Okay, so what do we do with that? Uh, idea number one, which is a terrible idea, but I'm just gonna throw it out there. Let's not borrow any money and let's just raise rates that, so that we can fund, cash fund what we have coming up. So what that would do is we would need to increase our rates by eighty five percent. And then we could leave it at zero for a while and we'd have a whole new council, so it'd be.
They'll, they'll forget.
Great, great plan. Uh, so, don't really like that idea.
Might affect the popularity.
When am I?
So what we did was we said, okay, what do we think we could actually float here? How, how could we do this? And this is the best plan that I've come up with, um, um, that would work. Uh, so what we would do is if we, uh, bonded for another thirty six million dollars over the next four years, we could take big chunks of these capital projects and build them with bond funding. Uh, but you can see our, uh, bonding is increasing. However, um, our debt service coverage, this number needs to be right, uh, just above at least, excuse me, I should say, not just above, at least one point two five. So we're, we're good with all those. But what that would require is a series of water rate increases, thirteen percent, thirteen, thirteen, nine and a half. And then we could settle down into kind of a more sustainable, uh, once we catch up with the level of funding that we need.
To be clear, these would not, these would be water fund enterprise bonds, not general fund bonds.
Correct, correct. Which is, yeah, exactly, which is why we checked that, um, the revenue coverage there at the bottom. Okay, again, going quickly, but, uh, this is cash flow. This is where you wanna be in the gray with the plan that we've identified, we're staying pretty close to that. We have a couple of years, we dip a little bit under that, but we're still doing okay, uh, from, uh, cash, cash reserves. Um, okay, so again, here's the comparison, eighty five upfront, go zero, or we can do some bonding and we can, uh, smooth into it. Um, okay, so conclusions, the cost to maintain and operate culinary secondary systems have exceeded water revenues, that's, that's where we're at today. Um, our recommendation is that we need to do something with water rates as soon as possible in order to meet our revenue needs. And I, I should point out on the cash flow, if we don't do anything, um, next year, we're, we're out of money. So this is something we cannot postpone on the water side. Um, and then option two, which, which is our recommendation, is the, the bonding and the increases. Uh, I think I went super fast here. Oh, this, the one last slide is people wanna know what does this do in terms of rates? Uh, over here, this is a residential customer without secondary access. And then this is just for secondary water, just for a point of comparison. And then what we did was we looked at a kind of a lower user, average high and very high, and what this would do to their bill. In twenty twenty five, because we would be implementing those, uh, tier changes, we actually hit the higher users a little heavier and the lower users, average to low users less. After that, it's just the, the straight percent increase because we've made our shifts and then from there we'd just be scaling up, if that makes sense.
This is for option two.
This is, this is all for option two. Uh, the average user, notice five ninety five, they jump up to six sixty seven for the year. So that's about seventy doll, seventy two dollars, six dollars a month is what that would impact the average, uh, water bill. Okay, uh, let me just make one more comment. Uh, I am doing dozens of these right now. Um, you are not alone. You can feel good about that, you're, you're amongst friends. Uh, Provo.
I don't know about feeling good about.
Provo's looking at a thirty five percent increase, Sandy just adopted a twenty percent increase, Stranger Hunter was like at eighteen. Um, yeah, uh, construction costs over the last five years, average inflation, CPI has gone up, uh, like twenty four percent. And everybody knows, wow, that's massive inflation. Construction costs in the utility industry have gone up sixty five percent over the last, uh, five years. So this is just, everybody's getting creamed by this right now. Um, and we're doing our best to stay on top of it, um, but it's still difficult. And with that, I will answer questions or get out of the way.
So my, my biggest question is, I'm not sure which, there's several graphs that you can probably, that's a bar chart across. I mean, there's no argument that we need to adjust our tier. I hope we talked about before and, and have an increase, but it seems like so with this one, it's the next six or seven years, they're saying we're gonna have these, these capital project costs for growth. And that's what we're suggesting for this rate increase would be to just bond for those upfront, get them done and increase the rate to cover the payments, right?
Yeah.
That's what this option is prescribing. So my only, I guess, issue with that strategically for us is looking at past projects. We just take that on, kind of, almost the, the conversation we just had, if we just take that on and do it, then we just took it on and did it. And we're just collecting these rates and whatever impact fees trickled in versus our developer friends have been skinning the game and helping us find ways to fund them as we have before. So I get this is like, this is what I do for a living is calculate these things and forecast it. The numbers work and it's a, and it's a good plan, but it does, there's an opportunity cost for us to, on the negotiation side. I'm not advocating it, I'm just wanting to kind of point that out.
Yeah, uh, so to that point, there are communities that decide we, we do not care about development. That is not a priority to us. And in that particular case, they just say, this is what our budget's gonna be and this is all we can build. And what that means is we are not gonna approve development unless you can come up with the funding to build these projects. And so that is, that is an alternative.
I'm not, and again, I'm not advocating, I'm not suggesting that we necessarily go the extreme of one or the other.
Right.
What I'm suggesting is there's, in the past, there has been a middle ground. It is messier, right?
Yeah.
You gotta bring people to the table and talk, but.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't.
Acknowledging what you're saying, agreed. The question is, how much of these are we already obligated to build because of agreements we're already under?
And or aging infrastructure also is part of this, right?
Yeah, aging infrastructure, a lot of the.
But that's not the green.
A lot of the aging infrastructure is not going to hit us for a while, right? We're replacing the old town here shortly. After that, there's not a lot of replacement other than normal wear and tear, wear.
Yeah, but surprisingly, we have, you know, well failures and weird stuff that are happening.
That's included in this.
So that, I mean, that, those things absolutely should be covered in the rate increase. It's the, the big part of the jump in these early years is these capital projects, funding it upfront.
Do you have any idea what we're obligated to, is that most of this?
So a lot of this is obligated under M D As. We're anticipating, a lot of these capital projects are anticipation of water lines, pump stations, tanks needed to be built for like Olympia and Wasatch and the other developments that we have M D As for.
But these are our portions of those costs, not, not the total cost.
So these are our portions of those costs.
That was my next question, so we've already done a lot of these agreements, so I'm, I scanned, I skimmed through, right? So I'm assuming that there was one chart in there that, that says this is a hundred percent us and zero us.
Right.
So we, we went, we've identified some projects are a hundred percent city, some are eleven or eight or twelve, uh, based on what the demands are gonna be there.
So is it?
This is also part of the fact that there's additional capital costs to upsize culinary lines because of the lack of secondary changes, so that's.
I'd say that ten million, I totally understand. So I just wanted to connect those dots for everybody, myself included, and make sure I'm understanding that we're settled on, these are our costs, no matter what, those agreements are already done, there isn't.
Many, many of the capital projects, now, there are some developments in here where we're anticipating are going to get built in the next ten years, either we've seen plans or they have approved subdivisions.
So I'm, the one that of course comes to mind right away is Panorama, right? So if we're doing, if we're redoing those agreements, especially a pit, whatever, thinking these costs should shift to that.
So those ones have, so we've identified those projects and we've, those are where we're paying those cities upsize costs to feed the areas outside of those development.
One, one question that gets, I mean, I know that we're not in bad company with other cities in the same situation, but how did we get here? Like, it was forecasted, is it the build rate, the interest rate? Like where did our, our shift in philosophy of water funding change or shift or?
No, I, um, I.
We can probably answer that, cause we've looked through the last rate study. So a couple of factors, one.
So a couple of factors, one was they were only expecting the last rate study a two percent inflation. It also did in factor that the enterprise fund would have to bear some of the costs of the new development. They assumed in the rate study that impact fees would be a hundred percent of the cost. The other, the other factors, they were also considering assumption would just continue to increase and there has been conservation. There's multiple other.
I know. There's a, there's a factor that, that Jordan Valley.
Yeah, people using less water, we make less money, yeah, geez.
One of these things with all these rate studies is you can't just do the rate study, put it on a shelf and just. Just implement what's in the rate study. You actually have to look at it every year. Like with this rate study, if it's implemented, every year we'll go through and go, okay, are we reading the revenue targets? Okay, if construction costs gone up, we'll have to do either a recalculation and house with staff or use a consultant like Bowen Collins to help us with that. But leaving it for five years and not touching it is a major, major problem.
You're probably gonna get even less usage, which means there's higher, to a point, right?
The advantage of doing a stepped approach like this is it gives you the chances, you do it, you see what's happening. In the world and, and, and then you can make adjustments sometimes. Having, in the past, sometimes you have to go up a little bit more, sometimes you can hold off on, you don't have to go up as high because maybe interest rates have dropped.
Yeah, and these, and these bonds are calculated at today's interest rates, right? Yeah, they could be more or less in two or three years.
And just one other point of clarification, uh, right now, we've made a relatively conservative assumption relative to impact fees. Because all these costs are going up, your impact fees may be going up as well. In fact, I'm pretty sure they will.
Do you think we should waive any of this?
How, um, so, I mean, it comes down to the philosophy of taxation or funding, right? Is, do we want to, I, I think a stepped approach is correct, but I, I mean, maybe even looking at option three. Of having a higher step at the beginning to correct the ship. And then we lean off it a little bit more to create less of a bond issue. I mean, it is a different bonding structure, different platform, but the rates are higher currently than in the last ten years, right?
So the thing about those though is the, and what we've done in the past, when rates become more favorable. Then, and we need to make sure that we do this when we bond, that we can, we could, yeah, we can do a new bond and repay the old one.
And that, that big twenty twenty-four one could have been twice as big.
We just wouldn't have the coverage.
No, you, yeah, that's, I just, it's just a philosophy, I mean, we talked about, I talked about this the other day when we were some other officials, is like. Do we take that big fifteen, twenty, thirty percent step at day one and then increment every three to five years? Or every year we come back at a different rate?
The, the, here's, here's the problem, is that this decision doesn't impact the fee payers in a vacuum, right? Is their school district taxes have gone up, the county taxes have gone up, you know? Every fund underneath that their, their taxes have gone, right? Right, and then we just had, um, you know, public safety fee increase, right? So, I mean, a, all of those are going up. I, I mean, I was just taking a look at this the other day. I've been in my house for three and a half years. And just my mortgage payment to cover the taxes has gone up like five hundred dollars a month. From when I moved in, I'm like, dude, that's a lot. And I, my house payment has gone up five hundred dollars, I haven't moved, right? Then you conclude on that, you know, the, the cost of inflation, food, you know, to gas, everything else that everybody's doing. Our, our residents are, they're really breaking me. There, there's a lot of hard stuff going on. And, and that doesn't mean that we don't have to be responsible for making sure the fund operates and water is provided. But it has to be understood that, you know, you hit thirty percent increase. And, and they're suddenly having to pay twenty or twenty-five dollars more a month instead of six or eight or ten dollars a month. It's a lot, man. It, it, that adds up. And, and, you know, the county's not gonna suddenly say, oh, we've. You're right, we've been charging too much, we're gonna cut your taxes. They're never gonna go down.
Especially when we're claiming conservation, right? The more you save, the more you spend.
So I think that the, the, a, a tiered approach, like, it's gonna hurt. But it gives you a few years to catch up and wages to increase and maybe other costs to come down or something.
And it's easy in these discussions, which drives, I mean, this is before, drives me crazy because we tend to look at it back. Well, this percentage is only a dollar, it's only five dollars a month.
Coffee a month.
But added on to all those others is doing the same thing, like every dollar matters.
Go to the, go to the, the, a few after this where it shows the costs over the five years, yeah. So I mean, you're, you're adding in, in four years, you know, three hundred dollars a month for the high ends and, you know, a thousand dollars a year for the high users, right? I mean, ooh, that's a huge growth over a few years. I don't see wages going up thirteen percent a year, right?
But I think by us, I mean, I'm assuming you're looking for a direction of we want to look at pursuing one of these options. Each rate increase comes back to us to decide. Each time, right? So it's not like we're saying, yep, we're gonna do this and implement this over the next ten years.
Like Kyle said, we don't set it on the shelf for five years.
And the bond in two years, that bond, you might not need a thirteen percent because maybe the rates are much lower and you have no idea.
There, there's the advantage over, over the idea of, well, let's just take one big jump.
And these are, these are compounded.
Of course, yeah, for sure, yeah. And that's the other thing you gotta look at, the compound effect, thirteen percent, next year is not thirteen percent. It's thirteen percent on what we raised today too.
There is, there's that. Water is something people expect, hey, it's a right, we should have it. Really expensive to provide in this country, right? We, we expect it to be clean. We've talked about part of this thirteen percent is that extra four point three percent. So that's built in there to buy this water for. For people. And, and so it's, it's not free. Those pipes are really expensive and those costs. One of the things this will do will drive some conservation, which is its own challenge. But probably not a bad thing in the scheme of things because Utah doesn't have a lot of water. It's the second most arid state behind Nevada. Arizona gets more water than Utah. So.
It's because we live in the freaking desert.
But I think this, I think this conversation brings us to, that we're all aware of the constraints of our citizens and we take it under consideration.
High mountain desert, yeah.
So what's the direction?
Yeah, but there's an expectation of our citizens, again, just like what you're saying, it's like, we expect water to come out when we're on the tap. And not only do we want water that's safe, we want that's, that's even higher scale than what's even required by the, by the EPA. So when we're saying we.
We wanted to come out, we wanted to be pretty, we wanted to smell good, we wanted to be, you know, make our dishes clean.
Comes at a cost.
And save our appliances and other, and you know, yeah.
Are we leaning towards this alternative?
Is it, is it under?
Four percent increase in.
Is this, is option two.
Dishwasher in five years.
What, what our engineers or our outside source recommends?
Yes, that, option two is what I would recommend with the caveat that you want to. Come back and look at this in maybe even a year, but certainly in two years and kinda adjust.
Yeah, I mean, Jordan Valley is looking at it every year and seeing how much it costs.
Justin, does staff, does staff agree with that, agree with that, is that?
Yeah, we, we've been with Keith multiple times over the last several months and, and feel comfortable with this. And now just speaking with Kyle, re, yeah, looking back at the revenues and rates is gonna be something that Kyle and I will do during the budget process. So through the budget process, every year we'll look at it, so.
Shows that kind of a wrath.
And is our motto gonna be, at least we're not sandy?
All in that same, we all on in thirteen, and then I think the thought too is wait until August. Is that kind of what we had talked about? I, I, I mean, if we could, I would think October or November would be easier for people because they're using less, but.
This is gonna be a question we have to look at.
And I, I'm looking at Keith because I don't know how.
Six months on the revenue model.
Been modeled in your model. What's that going to do if we wait till October?
Could we wait, you know, do a fourteen percent, do it in October?
I, yeah, I don't know when you did your increase.
So this does assume that it's essentially July implemented. I mean, it's on a.
On our budget session.
On a fiscal year budget.
Normally, just twenty-five years of doing this, you always do it in the winter.
Yeah, I, I was about to say that.
July.
I would love it to go into months right now.
Then next summer, they're gonna go, whoa.
Three, two or three, four months is not gonna destroy this month.
No, but you, I mean, a one percent or two percent difference would be comparable, waiting three, four months. Depends on the water fund, like where's that?
Let us, let us run something else. What we need to do is bring this back to you.
Get a better number when we, when we go to vote on it, would you calculate what that first one needs to be to offset a four or five month delay in implementation?
Yeah, if we have to go to a sixty or seventy percent wait.
Cause we can't borrow any money from the general fund if you don't have it.
I am impressed and shocked that we.
I am shocked.
All right.
And you get you home.
Yes.
There you can stay and see the dare.
We get title ten down in eight minutes.
Yes.
You might get two point four.
That's your policy for work meeting?
I think we can.
It's, it's two pages long. I'm just asking, does this, does it meet your needs right now from what? I wasn't here for that conversation. Hopefully you read it, it, it spells out. That work meeting would be for those things that are, require more conversation things and we bring more basic items straight to the meeting. The one thing with any policy you adopt is that if you can, if you don't like. So I would say, having done this in other places. You normally you start and then the council will say, no, no, not that one. Okay, so then we step back and say, is this right? It, it's a little bit of us in the dark, kind of floundering at staff. Till we get comfortable and you get comfortable with, yeah, those are regular ones that go. So I put it in writing, it kinda says it that way, but it says it much better than I just did. You can, see, I, I tried to keep it short. Did anybody actually read it?
With this other stuff, I did not, that's one I did.
Okay, we'll come back. I tried to keep it really short so you guys could read it at a time.
There's so much other stuff.
Two pages. Can I look for motion two, temporarily?
A lot of white space.
I thought we were sauntering.
We're gonna saunt for six minutes.